Okay, I am calling to order this regular meeting of the Cordova Recreation and Park District Board at 6:32 PM. We start with...
Thank you. To lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, I'd like to welcome HR Manager Andrea White.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Okay, roll call, please.
Director Sloan? Director Danzel?
Here.
Secretary Yearwood?
Here.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Here.
And Chair Lineback?
Here.
Okay. Now we are going to move on to Item C, the Consent Calendar.
Item B for Public Comment?
Oh, sorry. Moving faster than I needed to.
Members of the public may address the Board on district topics not listed on this agenda. Speakers are limited to three minutes. It's a violation of state law for the Board to discuss or take action on non-agenda items. Board members may only briefly ask clarifying questions or refer the matter to staff. And I do not have any requests for speakers.
Thank you, and thank you for keeping me honest, Danielle. Item C now, Consent Calendar.
Thank you. Consent calendar items are considered administratively routine and will be acted upon in one motion unless separate action on a specific item is necessary. The Chairperson will consider any requests for discussion on the items prior to approval of consent calendar. And this evening, we have eleven items for your consideration.
Does anyone have any questions or wish any items pulled? Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve Consent Calendars C1 through C11.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes.
Second.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay, now we have no presentations and no committee reports, so we're going to move on to Item F, Public Hearings.
Thank you. Item F1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-8 approving Engineer's Report Confirming Diagram and Assessment and Ordering Levy of Assessment for Fiscal Year 2022-2023 for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting Assessment District.
Okay, thank you. I am going to open this hearing at 6:35 PM.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome to the podium our consultant, Brian Brown, to lead the presentation.
Well, good evening. It's nice to see all of you in person. I know it's been a couple of years, so it's very nice to be back. With that, we prepared a brief informational item for you guys. The Independence at Mather Landscape and Lighting Assessment District was formed in 2000. The district maintains landscaping and park and recreational improvements in the Independence at Mather subdivision, specifically Veterans Park and Independence Park. Tonight's the third step of the annual three-step process to approve the assessments, which occurs each year. The first action occurred on April 20th, when the Board directed staff to prepare the Engineer's Report. The second action occurred on June 15th, when the preliminary Engineer's Report was approved, and July 20th was set as the public hearing date. So tonight is July 20th, and the Board's being asked to hold the public hearing, take public testimony, approve the final Engineer's Report, and authorize the levy of assessments for fiscal year 2022-23. The fiscal year 2022-23 maximum assessment rates are proposed to increase by 3.21% over last year's rates, and it's proposed that the district levy the maximum rates this year. The fiscal year 2022-23 assessment can be increased by the greater of the change in the San Francisco Bay Area CPI, or 3%. And it was, the San Francisco Bay Area CPI was 3.21% this year. Therefore, the maximum assessment rates are proposed to be increased by 3.21%, and this equates to the maximum assessment rate for a single-family home, increasing from $184.23 to $190.14, which equates to $5.91 increase per home per year. All single-family homes in this district pay the same rate, and the district's projected to generate $241,000 in revenue. That concludes our presentation for the evening, but happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Okay, so at this time, I'd like to invite the public, if they have any comments. And seeing no public, I'm going to close this hearing at 6:37 PM. And now is the Board's opportunity, if they have any questions or comments? Anybody? No? Okay. So at this time, I'll call for a motion.
I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 22/23-8 approving Engineer's Report Confirming Design and, I'm sorry, my eyes are blurry tonight, and Assessment of ordering Levy of Assessment for Fiscal Year 2022/2023 for the Independence at Mather Landscaping and Lighting District.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Thank you, Director Sloan. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan? Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. Now, we are going to have a second public hearing on Item F2.
Thank you. Item F2 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-9 approving Engineer's Report Confirming Diagram and Assessment and ordering Levy of Assessment for Fiscal Year 2022-2023 for the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to open this hearing at 6:39 PM.
I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown for the presentation.
Thank you. So the Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement Assessment District was formed in 2006. This Assessment District assists with the funding related to maintaining landscape, park, and recreational improvements in the district. Tonight's the third step in the annual three-step process to approve the assessments. The first action occurred on April 20th, where the Board directed staff to prepare the annual report. The second action occurred on June 15th, when the preliminary Engineer's Report was approved by the Board, and a public hearing was set for July 20th. Tonight is, that is, July 20th, so the third action is occurring, and the Board's being asked to hold a public hearing, take public testimony, approve the final Engineer's Report, and authorize the levy of assessments for the upcoming year. The fiscal year 2022-23 maximum assessment rates are proposed to be increased 3% over the prior year's rates. It's proposed that the district levy the maximum assessment rates this year. The fiscal year 2022-23 assessment rates may be increased by the change in the San Francisco Bay Area CPI with a cap of 3%. Therefore, the maximum assessment rates are proposed to increase by 3% over last year's rates. The maximum assessment rate for a single-family home will be increased from $29.32 to $30.20, which equates to an 88-cent increase per home per year. And the projected revenue is approximately $1,140,000 to be generated in the upcoming year. And if you have any questions on this item, myself and district staff are available to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, now is that time in the public hearing for the public to comment? And seeing no public, I'm going to close this public hearing at 6:40 PM and invite the Board. Do they have any questions or comments? No?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that we adopt Resolution 22/23-9 approving Engineer's Report Confirming Diagram and Assessment and ordering Levy of Assessment for Fiscal Year 2022/23 for the Cordova Recreation and Park District Park Maintenance and Recreation Improvement District.
Thank you, Director Sloan.
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. So at this time, we are moving on to our regular calendar.
Thank you. This is the time for special proceedings. Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services, Annexation Number Five, Sundance. And Item G1 is to adopt Resolution 22/23-10, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area to the Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services, Tax Zone Number One. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Brown.
All right, thank you. So tonight, the purpose of our presentation is to kind of provide some background on the CFD annexation process and the specific development that is annexing into the CFD. As you may recall, CFD 2018-1, the Park Facilities and Services CFD was formed in December of 2018. The CFD was formed around two projects with the future annexation area boundary that was coterminous with the boundaries of the district. After formation, property within this future annexation area may be annexed into the CFD via streamlined process. Through this process, property owners complete a unanimous approval form, where the property owner approves the annexation of their property into the CFD and the annual levying of a special tax on their property. The statute does not require that the streamlined process for the annexation of a property within CFD's future annexation area be approved by the Board. However, as best practice, the district brings each annexation before the Board and has a resolution approved to ensure transparency and that there's a public record of the annexation. This will result in only one board meeting instead of the standard three-board meetings to complete the annexation process. And the first annexation occurred in 2019, and there's been four previous annexations. This is annexation number five. This resolution before you recognizes that the property owner of the Sundance project requests their property annexed into 2018-1. Based on the development projection provided by the developer, it's estimated this project will consist of 114 single-family detached homes, and that it will generate approximately $52,000 at build-out to help contribute towards park and recreational facilities in the district. The tax may be levied in perpetuity to pay for services, and if services continue, if assuming services continue to be provided by the district. And this concludes our presentation for this evening. But again, available to answer any questions you may have regarding the annexation. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Sloan? No? Director Danzel? Secretary Yearwood?
No.
Okay. I had, did have a question that came up. It's specifically related to 2018-01, but not necessarily specifically related to the Sundance annexation into 2018.
Okay.
-101. And that is, as I was reading it, it said that the funds could not be used for the building of community centers. And I know that in the future, the Rio de Janeiro Development will be annexed into this assessment, and that a community center is being planned for that part of the development. So how do we pay for the development of the community center with the CFD not permitting use of those funds for building of the community center?
Yeah, that's a great question. So the community center for the Rio de Janeiro project would be presumably paid for using park impact fees, and, which is typically how most community centers and things of that nature, large infrastructure, are paid for. The Cordova Recreation and Park District, and some of their CFDs actually have the luxury, which is rare, to fund some construction of actual large improvements like that. Like in Sunridge, they have the ability to do that. And that went back through a registered voter election back in 2012, eight, 10 years ago, something like that. With that said, the community center in the Rio de Janeiro Development would presumably be paid for using park impact fees, which would be the common method of funding such improvements.
And then at that time, once it's built with those park impact fees, then the CFD can pay for its upkeep and maintenance.
Maintenance, repair, replacement, things of that nature.
Yeah.
But not the initial construction.
Great.
That's correct.
It was just when I was reading the CFD terms and conditions, I'm like, what? No community center? What do we do? So thank you. I appreciate that.
Of course.
Okay. If anybody has any questions arising from that, maybe, and if not, a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move the Board of Directors adopt Resolution 22/23-10, Resolution of the Board of Directors of the Cordova Recreation and Park District, accepting the annexation of property located in the future annexation area, Community Facilities District Number 2018-01, Park Facilities and Services Tax Zone Number One.
Second.
Thank you, Secretary Yearwood. And a second, thank you very much, Vice Chair Reyes. Roll call, please.
Director Sloan?
Aye.
Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood? Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Brian and Anthony. We appreciate it.
Okay. Now we're moving on to H, Board of Directors Items.
Thank you. Item H1A is to appoint one Board Member Representative to an Ad-Hoc Committee for the Parks, Facilities, and Recreation Optimize Plan Stakeholder Meetings. As you know, we've been working with our contracted consultant, who is Gates and Associates, and the community outreach plan, including stakeholder meetings, is a component of that project. In a previous meeting, Chairperson Lineback indicated that she would like to appoint a Board Member Representative to an Ad-Hoc Committee for the stakeholder meetings. The team was informed of Board Member inclusion in the stakeholder meetings, and the staff report mentions that the team decided that Tuesdays between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM would be a standard time for the stakeholder meetings, just for consistency. But I wanted to provide an update and let you know that those meetings may run into the evening past 6 o'clock. So for the Board Member Representative to be aware of that. Thank you. I'll turn it over to Chair Lineback.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Jones. So the director that I would like to appoint to this ad hoc position is Director Danzel. Do those hours work for you?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. Thank you. So then, I would like to nominate Director Danzel to be the Board Member Representative on the stakeholders' meetings for the Committee for the Parks, Facilities, and Recreation Optimize Plan. I...
I don't think you need a second.
I am not sure how this works.
Second.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Chair Reyes, and roll call vote.
Director Sloan? Director Danzel?
Aye.
Secretary Yearwood?
Aye.
Vice Chair Reyes?
Aye.
And Chair Lineback?
Aye. Okay, so, sorry. Now we move on to H2, Board Members Reports and Comments. So we have no trainings, so we will begin with Director Sloan for your community activities report and comments.
Okay. I'll start off with July 4th, 3rd and 4th, actually. I attended both, both days. And, and as my other directors who were there can contest to, the park was full, very full. Parking was at max. It was the most people I've seen in the, maybe the last 18 years of, or 19 years of cityhood. It was, it was a lot of people. So that's good. That's, I mean, the weather was, I'll just say, perfect. You know, a little cooler on one day, but the next day was even, was better. So not like this. It was this, it was tough this last weekend. But excellent job. The Park District was, did their job and provided a facility that was just gorgeous. And I, actually, the only thing that bothered me a little bit was that when it comes time to introducing the band, or someone gets on stage, they, they thank the City of Ranch, Cordoba, or, and the Cordova Community Council for this great event. And I think that since it's our park, it would have been nice if they mentioned our name in conjunction with the top two. So that's something we have to look into the future. But I was just, it was just a great event. Great music, that the Queen tribute band was, I thought, just, it's like, I never saw Queen perform, but I feel like I have, well, that performance. Guy looked just like Freddie Mercury. The next thing I was attending was the Cordette Aqua, Cordech Aqua Show, which was, this is the second one they've had in our facility. And, you know, it's a fun, it's a fun thing to see, and I really, I know it's, it's not an easy thing to do, is I watch these kids perform underwater and come up, and supposedly there's a speaker under there, but I don't know how well you can hear it, but they gotta be in perfect timing and do their thing. And everyone's just talking how wonderful it is to have their, a pool of their own. They really, really appreciate it, and it's a great facility. And with that said, I actually, on the next day, they had something for the blue marlins there, and I also went there because I wanted to take some photographs of them. And once again, it was, wow, we have our, our own home, you know, our home, our own, not turf, but our own home pool, which is a great thing to have. And the next thing was Party in the Park, which was at a different park this year, we all know, Heron Landing. And it was very well received, very well attended. I, you know, I was a little worried about the heat, a little worried about the lack of canopy, but people made do, and it was, that, that spray park was full, and I got some beautiful photographs, because every, you know, the sun was going down, and the, the reflections, and it was just beautiful. And so, and a great job by staff. And there are little minor things that we can tweak out, but there, I think all in all, it was a great event. It really was a success. And that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Director Sloan. Director Danzel?
So I've just got two, two small things. Ranch, Cordova, 4th of July, which started for me on June 27th, and goes till July 5th. It's, I don't know why I suffer through that every year, but for some reason, I sucker myself into it, and, but I guess I just love Haggen Park. You know, it takes a week to set that thing up, and a seven hours to tear it down. That's, that's the incredible thing. Other than the fencing, everything else is gone pretty much within seven hours of, of that, of the 5th of July. You know, I get to work with staff during that point, down the, the park, park maintenance staff, and those guys are incredible. I mean, they, they know where everything is, they know how things work, they know, and, you know, 16 years ago, when I started that project, I couldn't say that about the Park District. They, you know, there was always some problem 16 years ago, and we've come a long way. And it's, it's great to see how the group that we have now, how much they truly care for the park. I mean, you could see something, and they're already taking care of it. They know what, they know that there's something that needs to be fixed, and they're fixing it. You know, like I said, 16 years ago, couldn't say that was true in this district. So I'm very proud of the work that they, all the crews do, but the crews in Haggen for that week, you know, seeing it firsthand. Because typically, I get to see, you know, we drive by parks, and we're like, oh, looks great. It's, you know, it's, it's green, it's cut, and, you know, there's no trash around. Well, when you actually get to see the crews working to make things happen, it's a, it's a whole another ballgame. Like to thank Scott Norton, he went out of his way. There was some minor issues that popped up with the fire marshal and the fireworks, and Scott Norton jumped in, you know, jumped into action and just made sure that things got done so we could have those fireworks, crazy things. They needed, you know, a quarter, quarter of a five-gallon bucket that needed sand in it. Well, sand's not something we carry like we used to. And so, you know, Scott was able to find it, garden hoses, just weird things that we've never had to deal with before, but the district staff was on it, and, you know, the fire marshal, new fire marshal we had out there this year, put us, put the fireworks team, the Cordova Community Council, Scott Norton, and myself through, through tests, trying to find these things. And we were able to do it, thank goodness, because we had fireworks both days. But, you know, like I said, that staff knows what they're doing, and I'm very proud of all the work that all of our crews do in all of our parks. Party in the Park. I'll be honest, it was only the third time I've been at Heron Landing Park since, you know, since the opening. Not a park I go to, not a part of town I go to that often. I wish I, wish I'd have, have a reason to. I know, I can go see Director, or Secretary Yearwood, but that's, you know, you're, you work weird hours now, and I just don't want to, you know, go out that far to, you know, do that. No, it was, it was, it was a great event. I was happy to see, you know, our programs being represented, Senior Center being, or, you know, the Senior Center being represented, the foundation being representative, represented. I know that they're, they're booze-wagging. They, they did great on it. They pushed it that night. Unfortunately, I didn't win. I don't think, well, I know none of us won, but we all tried, hey? But it, you know, it all went for a great cause, and that's all that really mattered. Like, you know, my wife looked at me, and she's like, well, if we win, you have to donate it back. I said, yeah, we don't need all that in our house anyway. So I was willing to do that. But, you know, it's, we've done that, we've done that in a couple of different parks throughout the years. I'm glad the district has decided to move it throughout the district and not just keep it in one location, because we don't need to be stagnant in that way, and just, you know, cater to, in a sense, cater to one part of the district. We need to cater to the district as a whole, and moving it around. And I think that's going to be a great asset to this district. You know, staff did their job. I think, you know, Chase hit Marshmallows was incredible. I, you know, can't hit a golf ball as far as a man hits a marshmallow. But, you know, it's, it was good to see the activities. I could not talk Secretary Yearwood into doing the, the earphones for the music. I just, I couldn't, the silent disco, I couldn't get him to do it. He just, I don't know why, I just couldn't get him to, you know, put him on a dance, you know, to his own beat, but... No, I didn't. I asked, and you said no, and I respected that. So, but, you know, I thought, you know, the food, food vendors we had out there were great, you know, and it was nice to see Beach Hut Deli out there, and talk to the owner of Beach Hut Deli, and letting us know, hey, things are getting close. You know, this is what we've got done. This is what we've got. I'm hoping this is the, the date I'm shooting for. I won't reveal that date, because that's not mine to reveal. But, you're welcome. But, you know, it was, it was a great event. It was a little warm, but we've had warmer events. We even joked about those warmer events on that night, you know, 105 at 11 o'clock in the morning days, on a ribbon cutting, things like that. So, once again, I want to commend staff and everybody that, you know, worked that day, and all our other organizations that came out. The candle lady, I know her candles started melting a little bit, but, and, you know. Ms. Nunn's over there, she became a candle seller for a while, and she did a great job. She at least had lots of people under the tent, talking to people, talking to them about candles. I don't know how many she sold, but she had a lot of people that she was talking, talking to about candles. But I'm very proud of this district and everything that the staff has accomplished in this last month, definitely, but always what they've accomplished. But this last month is always a tough one. So I'm very proud of the district. That's what I've got.
Thank you, Director Danzel. Secretary Yearwood?
Thank you, Chair. I attended only on the 3rd for the 4th of July celebration. Yes, it wasn't a lot of people there when I got there, but I actually got there a lot earlier than I normally would. But by the time we were leaving, that place was really packed, and the lines for those food trucks were unbelievable. I mean, you had to walk around the line to get out of there, so. But the park looked great. Things were a little, set up a little bit different this year, but I'm sure that I didn't get to see the fireworks again, sadly, so I'm sure they were spectacular. I'm sure that I didn't get to see the fireworks again sadly, so I'm sure they were spectacular. I don't think anybody posted any videos. Thanks, everybody, but oh, they're online? Okay, I'll go look for them. I went to the Cordette Aqua Show on July 9th as well. It's, again, like Director Sloan said, it's nice for them to have their home back. I'm not sure if the program number wise is any bigger or greater, but they have a little, they have the little junior cordettes, that was cool. There's a little boy there doing his thing, so. But I agree with Director Sloan, I don't know how you can remember to swim, do all you have to do, do all this choreography stuff, you know, it's just unbelievable that he said we all should, by the way, he said, he recommended we do some kind of production. So if the lifeguards can do one, so can we, which then mean the lifeguards would come in to save all of us, but so that's, get yourselves ready, okay? I do, I do Haunting at Hagan, he's taking over the Cordette Soccer Show.
It was to the tune of Splish Flash, I was taking a bath. We have a back
There we go, so.
I'll believe it when I see that you do a polar plunge first.
Well, you gotta have a polar plunge for me to do one. Not saying anything. It wasn't nobody's fault or anyone's fault, sorry for the proper, improper grammar. But, and I did also attend Party in the Park. I didn't get it in before publication of the agenda, so it was nice. The park looked great, Heron Landing looks phenomenal still. Was a little warm, but I swear there was a breeze. There's always a breeze out in the south part of the county. It could be like a furnace, but there's at least a breeze. I don't think Lincoln Village gets that kind of breeze. But it was nice, well attended. If it's next year, get me a little earlier. I will do Silent Disco. You get one or the other though, Polar Bear Plunge or Silent Disco, not both.
You got that Clerk Jones in writing? Yes, thank you.
Trust me, at work, they, they like to watch me dance around. Oh, I never could do hula hoops. I was never good at that. I don't, I can never do those. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you Secretary Yearwood, Vice Chair Reyes.
Chair Leinbach, right now I have nothing to report.
Thank you. I too attended the Cordova Cordette's Aqua Show, it was my first time. And I thought the kids did a great job. I really did. They worked hard, they had all these costume changes and, you know, breaking out into different teams and yeah, it's not just swimming and, you know, listening to the music, but then they have to pick these very brief moments to breathe and go right back down again and I was impressed by them. I thought they were great and I loved the fact that it was, you know, all ages and, you know, catching them young. I thought that was great. So I enjoyed that a lot and I'll, I'll go again next year. And then I also attended the Party in the Park at Heron Landing. And, you know, it looked well attended to me, the food trucks were being utilized, the games, the various vendors. It was warm, but there was a breeze and yeah, it was an enjoyable event. I look forward to it and other annual events being moved around the district and not staying in one park. I, I'm sure there's no flexibility when it comes to the 4th of July, but maybe some of the other events can be moved around like Meet the Machines and different things like that. And so that is my report. I do have a couple of comments. One is I, I did receive an email from a member of the public who lives in Rosemont expressing her condition about the state of the tennis courts at Rosemont Park. And I did let her know that the project was, you know, delayed due to the, the grant funding not being complete. And I let her know that I thought the more the public allows us to hear their voice by coming to meetings, you know, you know, passing out petitions and things of that sort, the higher those projects tend to get on priority lists. So I encouraged her to undergo that process. Unfortunately, she could not come tonight, but I told her I would bring her comment to the board. And my other comment is, I, I guess I could even do this offline because it's not specific to, I, I will just send you a quick email later. It's not really an issue for the directors meeting, so I don't even know why I wrote that down. Anyway, that's my comment and now we are moving on to comments by staff on non-agenda items.
Thank you. Item I1 is the district-wide monthly progress report for July and I'll turn it over to General Manager Larkin.
Thank you Clerk Jones. We had a very busy month, of course. Summers are always very busy. We met with Gates and Associates to download them on our CRPD finances, capital improvement plans, stakeholder lists, as well as development and outreach strategies. We are looking forward to kicking that off. We should be having our live website starting at the end of this month, beginning of August. It's going well. We just had a meeting again yesterday. So we're looking forward to Director Danzel being a part of the process to get the stakeholder feedback as well as a, a survey that will go out as well to get a very robust response rate. So we can start developing the plan and outreach efforts and questions as to what their wants and desires and needs are going forward. So we're very excited about that. I attended the Ranch Cordova Travel and Tourism Board Meeting. I am now a new advisory board member. So basically what that means is they are having a time at their meeting set aside for how we can collaborate with them by marketing each other, having some of our parks be destinations for tourism. We have some pretty fantastic award-winning parks here, so they're tapping into those, you know, tournaments, like for example, if there's a softball tournament at the Mather Sports Center complex, they'll have a hotel stay, but they also would want to maybe have the younger kids go and check out our Splash Park at White Rock Park and stuff like that. So we're creating a synergy with them and I think it's gonna be important and looking at us more broadly instead of just community-based which we're, which we're doing. So I'm excited about what will come from that with those marketing collaborations that we'll have with them. We are also finalized with our CRPD voting district maps. I believe the board got those maps sent to them yesterday and it is currently now live on our websites. They're great. We're very happy with the results of that. We worked very hard with the consultant to finalize those maps. It has great keys, it has great parks, amenities, assets in each of those district maps. So check that out if you haven't had an opportunity to do so. We also had three new appointees to the CRPF Foundation. They are new, but not new to the community. One of them is Ani, who used to work for the Chamber of Commerce, so she is now one of the new appointees. And then there are two other members that were appointed that applied for these open positions and went through an application process review and then were appointed at the last meeting. So they're excited. They have now, I believe, six members and they have one more seat. So they reduced the seats from nine to seven through their bylaws and they're in recruitment for one more. So they're excited about that. Some new people that are excited to fundraise and move us up, up to that next level. And they've done a tremendous job this year. The results of the Booze Wagon fundraiser, they made over $2,000 with that event and it was mostly donated items in that, so it's like literally $2,000 profit. So I'm super proud of them and they've just been really energized to really get out there and get the word out about the foundation and what we do as well as fundraise, so. Kudos to them. Just for note, declaration of candidacy may be filed at the Sacramento County Register's office at 7,065th Street, Suite A in Sacramento, between Monday, July 18th and Friday, August 12th, 2022. So for anyone who would want to be a candidate, that is your window of opportunity to file. Also, the Chamber Elected Officials Reception will be Wednesday, August 3rd at 5:30. An email went out from Danielle, an invitation if you would like to join. For that, it's more of a casual type of setting, a happy hour hors d'oeuvres kind of thing. No speeches, more just having an opportunity for people to mingle and network, so. I encourage you to join that if you can make it. Overall, for budget, spending is, sorry, yeah.
Just wanted to make sure it said the Chamber.
It's the Chamber of Commerce.
Yeah, but it's at the Chamber's office?
No, it's at the Grange, I believe.
The Grange?
Yeah.
Because the flyer.
Yeah, it's at the Grange and I believe you have to RSVP so that they know who will be attending. So overall, spending is under 20% in comparison to 18% last month, so that's good. We'd like to save our pennies for that rainy day and it seems to always be pouring. The remaining CIP funds, $2 million, will be encumbered for the final budget and projects rolled over into the following fiscal year. So that's great that we are anticipating completing some of those things that we started, but due to the delays and supply chains and all that fun stuff, we're still intending to complete them, so. Community involvement, the district participated at the Ranch Cordova Chambers Business Expo Career Fair on June 23rd here in the parking lot. And we had both Shelby and Shannon recruiting for folks that were there. They came ready with their resumes and we did pretty well in terms of getting some pretty good candidates out of that, that option and it was just a great way for us to promote the district as well, so. Our recruitments are, you know, going strong. We, we still have quite a few member of recruitments that are in process and some appointments will be made and announced in August. The Parks Facility Recreation Optimized Plan, a little more information on that, as I mentioned. We have been meeting with the Gates and Associates and the optimized plan kickoff will occur at the next board meeting. They will come and kick this off officially for us, give you the steps and the plan that we're intending to move forward in so that everyone is on the same page. And as I mentioned earlier, that the website will go live by the end of July, which we're excited to let you know when that comes out. In Grant Line 208, Arista del Sol Community Park Outreach and Design, CRPD staff has started working with Calendar and Associates on the park planning process. Staff and Calendar and Associates representatives are coordinating public outreach components for the project. This outreach phase is a crucial piece of identifying the community needs and appropriate park amenities. It is anticipated that surveys will be distributed to stakeholders and residents this summer, followed by the first community workshop in late summer, fall. So that will be a great opportunity for us to connect with those residents out there and get their feedback as to what their wants are for that community park. So we always love those. Those are kind of our favorite thing to do in park planning and development, at least mine.
You will let the board know when the community meeting is going to be?
Yes, we'll absolutely let the board know. Yes, of course. For Rio de Oro, owned by Easton Development Company and aka Aerojet, we did meet with them and they made a presentation to CRPD and city staff about the proposed park lands in the Aerojet ownership area on June 28th. Aerojet and the city requested CRPD allow the large lot final map move ahead for approval at the August 1st city council meeting. The final map is needed to transfer habitat and public utilities parcels so development of Rio de Oro can continue without delay. So we will be looking to have a PDA developed with them with some language that will, in essence, run with the property when Elliot had the same kind of experience with that same property land. So we are in talks right now about the condition to which and when we would look to get dedicated those properties for parks that have to be considered DTS certified and cleared in order for us to accept them. So Bob has been great about creating good language to protect that asset going forward, so. Thank you Bob, who's in the audience here. We do have $250,000 in Prop 68 grant money. A lot of these have been stalling because they actually have the money, but they're sending us, they need to send us the contract in order for us to accept it and move it forward. So there has been some delays on some of those grants that we should have received and, and gone, so. Bear with us, we're still intending to go forward. More to answer the question that you had Chair Leinbach about the Rosemont Sports Courts. So we do have partial funding already approved. I am working with the County of Sacramento staff to see if I can get the remaining amount that we did not receive through their COVID Relief Plan funds, that I put in a request for approximately $250,000 for them to finish the project so that we can become whole. I am in good contact with the Director of Parks and Recreation at the county and she's been giving me updates. They're looking at bringing it to the Board of Supervisors in September. So that's their timeline at this point. The Prop 68 funds that we received is 250,000 and it is slated for Williamson Park. Yep. The Gold Rush Park, the first Rio de Oro neighborhood park, the developer's design consultant has submitted the construction plans for the City of Ranch Cordova to obtain permits. Exploration Park, the developer's design consultant is finalizing construction plans for some metal to the city for permits. Dave Roberts Park Walkway Maintenance Project, the construction inspector, John Biondo, assisted park services in the completion of the maintaining, of the maintenance of the existing walkways in the park, improving accessibility routes to the playground, seal coating and removing bad deteriorated sections of the walkway. So that was a great project. It looks great and it's safe. So we, we are trying to hit those, you know, crooked miles that are unsafe to, you know, get around on. So that was a great project that we were able to, to finish in an economical way, so thank you to the staff for that. The Lincoln Village Restroom, the construction contract was awarded last month. Start of construction is waiting on the delivery of the prefabricated restroom, estimated to be here late summer. So once we receive that, we will install it and we will celebrate that the Lincoln Village will have a restroom other than the one in the Aquatic Center. Villages of Zinfandel, the Bicycle Path Repairs Project. A and B asphalt ceilings will start repairing, crack filling, sealing and striping the bike trail located in the center of the VOZ known as a Corvina Bike Trail. And with that, that was a lot, so I'm gonna turn it over to Jill Nuns, our Director of Parks and Recreation.
All right, thank you. Good evening. As always, there's lots going on in Parks and Recreation and golf and marketing communications, so I'll just highlight a few. In our adult sports program out at the Mather Sports Complex, we're happy to have our adult basketball leagues return. It's been quite a while for that, so excited to see that people are coming back to the center to play some adult basketball, so that's great news. Aquatics, it's been a great summer of aquatics. We have lessons, lessons, lessons. If we had more staff, we'd have more lessons, but we're excited that the, you know, the community is using both of the pools, that they're coming to our pools to take lessons, which means that obviously they're gonna be safer no matter where they swim, so. I have to say that I'm impressed with our aquatic staff, that we have hired really great lifeguards and pool managers and that we're one of the very few pools that haven't had to modify our staff out, remain our operating hours or anything else based on staffing levels and so I'm very proud, I know, knock on wood, but I'm very proud of that aquatic staff that we were able to do that. Of course, if we had more, we'd be able to do more lessons and programs, but overall that we were able to get a solid staff for this summer. And if you watch the news, unfortunately, other agencies are having to modify their aquatic facilities, so kudos to that staff. Two pools and White Rock, pretty impressive, so congratulations to them. Youth and teen programs are, oh my gosh, going amazing. We have a lot of youth and teen programs this summer. We've done even a preschool summer camp, first time ever, very successful for the preschool. Camp Cordova, numbers are overflowing with campers. Excited to see those campers come back. What a huge asset now that Camp Cordova, they can get into the pool, it's a win-win. That really sells that program, that that pool is there, especially on those hot days that you guys are talking about. You know, as the afternoon comes and it's 1:05, they get to swim in the pool, so super excited. Camp Cordova and all the camps are going well, whether or not they're at the Hagan, you know, Community Park or over at the Mather Sports Complex. Youth and adult sports, I'm, I'm impressed, so we're doing very, very well with that. Senior Center, just amazing. I love going over to that senior center. Seniors are definitely being well taken care Seniors are definitely being well-taken care of. Heather Schelzke is now a graduate of the Leadership Rancho Cordova, so we're proud of Heather, and that she was able to graduate from that program. Lots of fun programs coming up for seniors throughout the rest of the summer, as well as in the fall. In the Parks Department, Patrick kind of stole a little bit of the thunder for the Dave Roberts Park, Dave Roberts Community Park. You can see there a couple different pictures, if you haven't had a chance to go out there, it's, you know, it's a good project, we were able to, again, make those pathways a little bit safer and be able to have that ADA access down to the playground, so a good job by both park planning and parks, I appreciate that. As you all have mentioned, obviously, the Fourth of July event at Hagen went very well. Yes, it's a lot for our staff, but I am as well very proud of the work that they do. It is a lot for them, we do a lot of collaboration with the CCC, but in the end, the community doesn't see all that hard work, you know, that happens behind the scenes, and that's our job. Our job is so that they don't notice any of that hard work, so thank you for the kudos, I will certainly pass it on to the Parks Department, but I'm very proud of them as well, that they continue year in and year out, just to do an amazing job and support this community and especially the CCC, so thank you for that. Marketing Communications, as you see, there's a couple new bullet points for the marketing communications to give you some, you know, analytics and data about how much work that they're doing in terms of getting the Cordova Recreation and Park District out and about in, you know, social media, newsletters, websites, so forth and so on, so we'll continue to put those kind of statistics in the board report, so that you can see all the work that they're doing to make sure that we get out in front of everyone, so everyone knows how wonderful this district is and the programs and the facilities that we offer, so you can read up on that. And then the last thing, since it was mentioned by one of the board members, we are close with Beach Hut Deli. I cannot give you a date, I refuse to give you a date, but I've actually seen it with my own eyes, we are making progress, and it's coming sooner than later, I can tell you that, it's sooner than later, but I just, I won't do it. When you see me there, you know, having a sandwich, you'll know it's open, that's all I have to say, but it's getting closer. If you want to stop by, you know Chase is there, he would be more than willing to show you the progress that's being made out of Beach Hut Deli, so if you want to stop by, stop by, say hi, peek in the window, or he'll let you in, and you can see it. Almost done, almost, it's almost done. Okay, and then we'll go to the invitation, the special event invitation. Again, thank you all for coming out to the Party in the Park. I do agree, it's a little warm, we are thinking about possibly changing that to a morning event on the weekend instead of doing the evening, because the staff, it was a lot for staff, and then the participants, it's a lot, especially when it's that hot, so we are looking into it, you know, making those baby tweaks, but I appreciate the support, and we appreciate the support of coming out, again, another great event by the staff. You have the Breka Steering Committee meeting, which is on Tuesday, July 26th, Rancho Cordova Library, so you're back in meeting in person, that's going to be at 6:30 PM. And then Senior Citizen Day at the Neil Orchard Senior Activity Center, Wednesday, August 17th at 12:30 PM. And with that, that concludes my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for those reports. Now, we are on Item J, informational items.
Thank you. Item J one is your Articles Correspondence and Public Outreach. We had two articles and three public hearing notices, several blogs, and then we included a very nice letter from Mr. Crest Williamson that was addressed to General Manager Larkin. Two newsletters, and then J two is your calendar.
Okay, well, thank you very much. So, now we move on to Item K, closed session.
Thank you. This evening, we have two items in closed session. Item K one is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9, number of potential cases, one. Item K two is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to California Government Code Section 54956.9, Cordova Recreation and Park District versus the City of Rancho Cordova, case number 34-2021-80003705.
Okay, thank you. So, the time is now 7:25, and we will recess to the closed session.